All this meeting of Littleton City Council to order, clerk roll call please.
Mayor Schlatter.
Here.
Mayor Protam Raiden.
Here.
Councilmember Barr.
Here.
Councilmember Grove.
Here.
Councilmember Valdez.
Present.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
Councilmember Milliman is absent at this time, but I understand she will be joining us. We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, please rise for the place of allegiance. All right, we got a very short agenda here. Next item is approval of the agenda, council. I'll have a chance to review it. Any changes? Seeing none. The agenda is approved without objection. Item four, ordinances on second reading and public hearings. We have one item tonight. It's ordinance 16 of 2023, an ordinance on second reading submitting to the registered electors the city of Littleton, Colorado, a ballot issue regarding a proposed additional increase of a 3.5% tax on the retail sale of marijuana and marijuana products. We're going to have a little update, a little change in plans here, I think, but an update from the city manager and on this item, but I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening. Good evening, members of the council. Staff recommends the continuance of this item tonight. From tonight's meeting to a special meeting, which would be called on next Tuesday, September 29th. I'm sorry, August, not September. Been thinking about it all day. The reason, mayor, is that as we've finalized this ballot measure, we've also, we have a few new questions that could spark a discussion about the taxpayers' bill of rights and just making sure that we're in compliance with that law. So we would recommend that the council continue this item, and then along with that, we would schedule a discussion of that issue at that meeting also, a special meeting on August 29th. With that, you'd be allowed to take any questions.
Does council have any questions? I just want to, do you have a question? I was gonna say, just make a clarifying comment, so it doesn't sound so secretive or ominous. There was just an issue that we might have to have a second ballot question on the, second question on the ballot this November, and it would be related to Tabor, and to have this discussion in lines with, related to two different tax-related issues on the ballot. So rather than us just put this forward, if it might affect how we would vote with the issue that council doesn't have all the information on yet.
Right. Just want to make sure we're extra cautious and prudent also, so that the public can comment on both of those issues.
Yep. Is there, council, all good with that?
Yes.
All right, then I'll make a motion. I move to continue ordinance 16 2023, an ordinance on second reading submitting to the registered electors of the city of Littleton, Colorado, a ballot issue regarding a proposed additional increase of a 3.5% tax on the retail sale of marijuana and marijuana products to August 29th, 2023.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to continue discussion on this ordinance and continue the public hearing as well to next week. Council, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll open the vote. Vote for to continue to next week.
The vote is six in favor. The motion carries.
All right. That takes us to the next item, which is adjournment, and we will stand in adjournment and move to study session. Thank you. All right, I'll call the study session to order here at 6:30. All of council, including councilmember Milliman, is now present. We've got two items on the agenda tonight. First up is an update from the environmental stewardship committee, and then second up, we have an update on Geneva Village, which is serving. But it's great to have the environmental stewardship committee here joining us tonight. One of our newest committee here, one of our newest committees here, so it's great that you're all here putting in the work and coming to meet with all of council. And turn it over to Chair Malin there, and if you can go around and introduce the committee here.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. Let's start by introducing ourselves. I'm Scott Malan, chair of the environmental stewardship committee.
Nick Stevens, vice chair of the committee.
Sitaram Motupali.
Reynolds Abow.
Amy Kanta, I'm a secretary.
Hannah Kite.
And we have at least one member who's not with us tonight.
You, yeah.
Jeff is, I think, at Red Rocks watching Nathaniel Rateliff.
Excuse him.
Well, let me just start by saying thank you, council, first of all, for forming the environmental stewardship committee and for giving us the tools to succeed. We feel like we are off and running. We've had five meetings now. First was devoted to helping some of our members who are newer to local government understand the mechanics of how it works in Littleton. And since then, we've been talking about the substance of environmental stewardship in our community, and we fully expect that by December, we will have some work product for you that can serve as a structure for a systematic conversation about environmental stewardship in Littleton, which we are all very excited about. So thank you so much. Elizabeth has, I'll let her introduce herself, and then she has a brief presentation. We, I think, are on the agenda for 45 minutes. We're not going to take that much time, so we'll let you get. I know, Pat, yeah, Pat's like five minutes. And we will let you get on to your conversation about Geneva Village, so Elizabeth will take it away.
Yeah, I mean, my introduction is very brief. I'm very honored to be sitting next to each of these very amazing community members. It's been a thrill to be the liaison since April. I'm very excited about where they're all going, and I'm really excited to come back to you all in December. I know the work here, per a request from council, to be able to engage more with the committees, and so, see, this committee is very new, but it's really exciting for them, I hope, to be here. I don't want to speak for you all. But it's exciting for me to sort of get to show off some of the work that they've done so far, but we've still, we've got a very tight timeline of scheduled items that we're going to be getting through in the next couple of months in order to get you that draft December 12th of the action plan. So just to show you a little bit about where we are to date, this is the framework that they have been working on, based on all the conversations that we've had in those study sessions. So I might let you all speak to your work more than I would like to speak for you, if you'd like to talk about. So we have been focusing on values foremost to inform the vision that we come back to at the beginning of every meeting. So that vision is ongoing and developing, and then we are to a point where they're discussing outcomes. What is important? What are the, what do they want to see Littleton embody for sustainability in 10, 20 years? From there, we will identify some key performance indicators. How do we know that we have been successful? And then suggest some actions for you all to be able to take as far as implementation.
Yeah, short and sweet, because we've been on point. I mean, as a committee, we're moving, and I think, like I said, we're headed for a good outcome in December. I'll let any of the other committee members chime in if they want to, but that's where we're at. That's our check-in, and then, of course, we want to hear from council about your thoughts on where we are.
Can you speak a little bit, a little bit more depth about some of these focus areas? You know, kind of share a little bit of your discussions, and I realize you're, it's premature, but just kind of high level.
Yeah, absolutely. So we favor sticky note exercises, and so we did a deep dive into a sticky note exercise about outcomes, and basically, the idea here was, what are the topics that we have to have in an action plan? That we have to address if we're going to be comprehensive in our sort of advisory role to council? And so we put our heads together, and these are the sort of topics that we feel we can't really do without, that are indispensable to the conversation, that are necessary to the conversation. So obviously, water, right? Emissions defined as, you know, emissions of greenhouse gases. Air quality, meaning air pollution and the lack of air pollution. I'll skip community for a second, because it's worth circling down to that. Natural environment, right? One of the directives that we got from city council was not just to talk about environmental stewardship, but to talk about our natural, open spaces in Littleton. So, of course, that's on the list. Built environment, you know, without climate standards and green standards in our future built environment, and to be comprehensive on this topic of environmental stewardship. And then resource efficiency, consumption and waste. So on the front end, reducing resource use, and on the back end, managing our waste as efficiently as we possibly can. You know, on the topic of community, Littleton is a really unique place, as we all know, in many ways, including we have a very real tradition of visionary environmental stewardship in our communities past, including most notably, the story around the creation of South Platte Park. And we don't want to just do a plug-and-play environmental stewardship sort of action plan. Obviously, there are any number of communities that are having this conversation right now, and certain themes start to emerge, certain strategies start to emerge, and we will use some of those where appropriate, but we also want to come up with a tailored, with a tailored action plan that's specific to the type of community that Littleton is, its specific needs, its specific wants. That also is a nod to the need for community buy-in, community consultation, as we move the sustainability conversation forward. So, yeah, in a nutshell.
I think that ties into the values work that we did, too, so that the community really came out of a lot of those values and understanding that, like, if we're to truly carry out those values, we can't just look at this from the perspective of actions that are going to impact directly, you know, economics and finances and built environment, things like that, but there's an actual community that we need to be aware of and present of as a part of this process, and we need to both incorporate their input, which is, I think, carried out in the values, but we also need to consider that they're going to be a part of the solution. So any solutions that we develop need to have a communal focus around them, whether that be educational-related or things that might support, things that might support, like individual households or something along those lines, in making some of these changes that are going to be necessary to be, you know, zero carbon by 2050 or something like that.
Other questions?
I have.
Yeah, please.
I assume you're going to come up with some programs, like recycling or whatever, one trash hauler. I don't know. How do you look at budget? Because you could come up with some, like, so many wonderful ideas, and I don't, maybe we don't have the budget for all of them. I mean, how does the budget play into what you're going to recommend?
Actually, that was going to be my question to all of you. I mean, how practical do you want us to get? Do you want us to dig into the building code and say, that's dumb, that's good?
Yeah, I mean, the fact is, we could list 1,001 projects that are related to the goal of environmental stewardship, and it's a balancing act, and we're having that conversation on an ongoing basis. You know, do we just make that list? Or what's far more likely to be our action plan is something that more resembles a constitution, a framework, a structure that informs future, future work. You know, December is a tight timeline, and that's okay. I mean, we're, we want the challenge. We want to move forward. We keep stopping as a committee and reminding ourselves that we're going to be a committee for a long time after December, and what we're planning to do is circle back and then do deeper dives into sort of each of our outcomes, key performance indicators and actions, and be making much more specific recommendations to council that would include sort of the recommendation from every perspective, including a budget perspective, including a staff capacity perspective, including a regional partnerships perspective and so on. Yeah, I mean, we're very aware of the fact that some of these things are going to cost money, and we'll be very eager to hear from council on what you all want to do with that. There's, you know, another piece of that, which is, now more than ever, there's money available to be doing this type of work from governments, from nonprofits, which is an exciting opportunity. So, you know, hopefully, right, we will have some financial help, and of course, also, you know, one of the, one of the sort of earmarks for the 3A sales tax increase funds was sustainability efforts, stewardship efforts. And, you know, so hopefully, that'll be part of the conversation as well, letting that tax money do what the voters ask the city to do with it, so.
I think to your question, at least my opinion, I think there's no bad ideas. I mean, from your perspective, I think, kind of don't necessarily give budget a consideration. That's up to the city manager and his staff to be like, it's a great idea, yeah, we can't do that, but I think, you know, to have a, throw a whole bunch out there and figure out what, what we can and can't do, just be, and maybe you might think something is too out there, and it's like, no, I think we can handle that, so I think.
So the aspirational approach is just fine.
I think the aspirational approach is, I'm not guessing for everyone, but that's my release.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, just to the question of budget, I can share a little preview, since we are, given the time and the action plan recommendation and the timing of budget, staff's currently contemplating a recommendation to council of a, you know, $150,000, you know, allocation for, you know, for environmental stewardship next steps. You know, I think we weren't ready. We think, you know, it sounds like, you know, the action plan certainly isn't completed now. We don't know if it's time for an FTE, or if we need some money for additional master planning, leveraging grants. So the recommendation will be that there's kind of this placeholder of funding for next steps for next year, and that should give us some room to work with the action plan to at least take us to where we really do know what the, you know, the committee and the council's plan is for the future.
Yeah, I was gonna say, to answer Amy's question, then, would be almost a business plan. You know, it would have everything from, you know, what is it you want, you would like to see accomplished, you know, how would it be accomplished, you know, not every detail, of course, but, you know, how would it be accomplished? And also, when or kind of a timeframe that it would take to pull that off. It may be an ongoing thing, of course. Also, maybe a cost of a ballpark, so that, you know, city staff and council would have an idea of what it would cost.
Awesome. Thanks. That really kind of puts it in a frame in my mind, because these meetings have just been outstanding. I mean, this is a great crew. It's one of those things that when the meeting's over, you go home and you kind of have to just absorb these excellent conversations we're having. We have a great group. Thank you.
And you, I mean, you all have good passion and great experiences. That's why we selected you to be on this committee here, and, you know, hopefully, I don't need to tell you that, you know, you don't need to solve everything here by December. It's not like, yep, this is the work, this is it, this is the plan, we're going to solve it, because, you know, as Chair said, you know, it's going to be a committee for a while here. And that plan, you know, as we've had all, like, comprehensive plan and like, it's all a living document, you know, it'll build off of it, so it's just kind of set the foundation for it there.
I just wanted, going back to those questions around, like, prioritization or recommendation of action, too, I think this group is doing a fantastic job at getting a very broad swath of types of projects, buckets and categories. You know, Public Works is already in process of implementing, you know, mid-implementation or even nearing the end of, some projects that would easily fit within these categories. And I think the idea is that when this committee comes back to us, that we have a buffet of options to say, what are the areas that we have maybe neglected, need to focus more heavily on in the future? And I just want to say, I think the group's focus, the working relationship can't be applauded enough, but the group's focus on resident, business, community engagement as a core focus of this is going to be exciting as well. It's not just what projects internal to the city can we focus on, you know, stuff that folks don't see, but what impacts can we make in the lives of an individual homeowner or an individual resident? I think that's an exciting prospect as well, so kudos to Liz and the Public Works team for helping shepherd this along as well.
I'm thinking of, you said buffet. I think, given a buffet, it'll never get done. If you give us specifics on what you think can really be done, almost the more details the better.
What you're saying, instead of, it's kind of year one, year two, I mean, priorities, so what's, what's the biggest impact? It may be an add-on to some public work program, or it may be a whole new program. So to Chair's point, it's not just a buffet, make recommendations, and it's a council goal, so it makes sense that we have money towards this goal for this budget cycle for recommendations.
Business plan, $150,000 a year, is kind of what I'm hearing, you know, we can deal with that, and at the same time, be aspirational. We have all these great things in our heads that we bring down, then, yeah.
If you get some other funding or a partner to work with, you may be able to do more than you think.
Yep, exactly. Awesome.
Beyond the conversation around budget, too, I think we, a lot of, some of our recommendations, and we want to make sure that's not just all budget, all things that are going to cost money, but there's a lot of opportunity, I think, for the city to influence the economic drivers around these things. With the Inflation Reduction Act and a lot of federal money coming down, not just for grants, but also for individual households to be able to do this work, giving them the tools to understand where they can become empowered with that money and with state money that's coming towards these things. We can really try to put little bits of, you know, economic juice behind this that ultimately makes these decisions that are defaults, whether someone cares about the environment. And that's my kind of like personal goal around a lot of this. I think it should be part of our goal in the report as well, is to say, okay, well, these are the things that are going to cost money, but these things over here, whether it be, you know, reducing, reducing the amount of time that it takes to get a solar project approved, or, you know, streamlining building codes for heat pump, water heaters, electrification devices, things like this. There's a lot of things that we can do that don't necessarily require big investments, but that can drive the decisions around environmental change to be easier for the individuals of our community.
It's really an exciting long-term conversation that's starting to emerge, like, one of the, one of the topics that keeps coming up for us as a committee is, how could the sustainability goals of the city dovetail with the new LPS epic campus? Because there's just so, so much need for skilled tradespeople in a sustainable future. You know, we need, I'll say lineman, because that's the phrase people know, line people. We need people who can work on, on transformers, who can serve as electricians and so on. So, yeah, there's a lot of sort of exciting, exciting opportunities that the conversation's starting to present.
Do you have all these questions?
No, please.
I get citizens email me saying, why don't we outlaw plastic or, you know, styrofoam containers? I promised that I would bring it up, even though you're not down to that level yet. But how, as a group, do you decide what makes sense to do at regional or state level and what we can bite off here in Littleton? I mean, do you have those conversations?
Yep. I mean, on that particular question, there's a new law that's coming into effect, January 1st, 2024, that's outlining styrofoam takeaway.
Yeah, but not plastic.
Yeah.
It's chipping away.
Yeah. You know, it's, we have to balance, and it's, it's a tricky part of, of our conversations and our ultimate recommendations. We have to balance, you know, what's politically realistic in the community with what's going to serve the goals of environmental stewardship, you know, I, and it's, we have a difference, difference of opinion as a committee, which is good, you know, that's how a committee should be. You know, I have some reluctantly about coming straight out and saying, single hauler all day, every day, because it can create issues politically, and that's not necessarily what we want. Meanwhile, you know, doing single hauler and curbside composting is very likely to be a future sort of need in terms of environmental stewardship and sustainability in the community, so, I don't know, we will make our recommendations after we all talk and vote, and leave it up to council to wrestle with some of those same difficult conversations. And we'll have a good, I think, dialectic with council and council back at us, and we'll get community input, and we'll kind of see where we can be effective.
What's, what's the most contentious issue you guys have discussed? Where you had the biggest disagreements?
Whether there is a difference, should they be, say, how come? Well, right now, we're wrestling with emissions and air quality should be combined.
Makes sense.
Not a lot of contention.
Sorry, I didn't mean to speak on your behalf, but that was very obviously the top.
The water person is always reminding us, Littleton has no water, don't have any water. I think they're tired of hearing that, and I promised to, after the last time, I would just refer to water. I don't have to give my speech again.
So far, the framework has come pretty peaceably. There hasn't been a ton of debate. I think the community has just been ready for it, and I know that when we, you know, start making really detailed recommendations sometime in the future, we will have debate, and that's, that's healthy, that's good, and that'll be reflected in our recommendations. But so far, it's, it's, we just haven't.
How has public involvement or engagement been? Can the city do, has there been, and can the city do more? Would you like the city to do more?
No, there hasn't been, and yes, we would like some, but let us talk about it, I would say, right? And, and make some requests, you know, maybe it's an online survey, or, we don't quite have our heads around what the questions are yet. So once we get that figured out, then maybe you guys would guide us about what, add it to something you're doing, or, I don't know.
I think some level of opinion polling is going to be necessary in order to prioritize some of these things, so I hope that that's something, you know, we can do in the future.
I think for the, for the committee to have credibility, as we make recommendations for the council, to have credibility as it votes on some of these things, for the entire conversation around sustainability and stewardship and natural open spaces in Littleton to have credibility, there of course has to be robust community input and buy-in, and we're going to have to create forums for that to happen, whether it's a master planning process with, with, with community events, whether it's some online survey, whatever it is, it's going to have to be a necessary part of this at some point, at multiple points.
And I, I think along with that, it kind of goes back to being specific about priorities. You know, it comes with the sales job on your part, you know, so we, so we need to do a survey, and here's why, and why this is an important issue. So you just, I think just coming and saying, let's do a survey, we do surveys all the time, almost, so I think it'd be a good idea to, you know, come up with some reasons why, specifics. And, and really, I think it, I think Scott has mentioned, you know, some of it is, it is political, and some are hot blunts for some folks, so you have to decide really how, what do you want to get done, or what do you want to be in an argument about?
Yeah.
I have one question, or actually a comment, too. I'm so excited to see what you guys come up with, and I do hope you throw a lot of, a lot of ideas that are outside of the box, because I know some of the ideas and projects you want to tackle are very reactive to what's going on in the environment. It's nice to get ahead and be more proactive. I think I had sent that info to you about, like, becoming a pollinator city, and it does, this is something small, but I think it could be, you know, it's, it could be impactful for the community. I think it's through either CSU or Butterfly Pavilion, but Minnetonka Springs was just designated as a pollinator community. I think there's a couple other communities around the city or the state of Colorado, so that might be a small project to tackle, but it could have very broad impacts and benefits.
Are we a tree city?
We used to be.
We are.
Tree city, yes, we are.
Until Keith cut them all down.
Too soon, that's what I'm saying, too soon.
That he already said.
Good.
Until Keith cut them down. Oh, yeah. Those are sick trees.
There's been some allusion to the fact that means something that I'm unaware of. Can anybody educate us on, what does it mean to be a tree city?
Have a lot of crap happen to us.
I think our Public Works director might be able to step up.
Can you answer that now, or do you want to get back to us?
We'll get back to you. Good idea.
Because I think, like, pollinator city, there's things, and if we're already a tree city, maybe there's some overlap we should understand first. Good idea. I like to have.
You told me you didn't.
I did have questions.
Oh, okay.
Counselor, they're broke.
The city has expertise in community outreach, and they do it all the time, but I think, as we saw in a previous study session, the process seems to be important to council, and that we do the right process in the right order, so I favor qualitative first and then quantitative, and then the words, find out what the issues are, and then quantify the issues as opposed to the other way around. That's just a market research bias, but our staff has expertise in how to do that, so I just throw that out to you so that recommendations will be accepted on the first go-round. Now I'm done.
Yeah, yeah, I'll believe it when they walk away.
I was going to say, if you're up to me, I'd say water, because they're, they're not making any more water, we're using a lot of water up, a lot of people coming here. You know, clean air is, of course, one thing, but our air gets cleaned, I mean, if you remember how it was during the, you know, years ago, it was really bad, so it's, it's finding ways to get clean, but water's just not happening, we're using lots of water these days. So, I mean, it could be, I, I think you had just mentioned the bee stuff, or no, you hadn't mentioned, Nick had, you know, educating people on certain stuff, like, you know, what kind of plants should they be planting, or grass should be planted, without making it look like a desert necessarily, although we are an arid state here, you know, it's, that's the kind of stuff that had, that would save on water, that you can get out there and still make Littleton a, a beehive city or whatever that could be.
Jerry, I'm going to have to give you my water lecture.
That will put us way over our time.
Really sorry.
During the interview, interviews were to gain an understanding of the needs of the individuals who currently reside at the Geneva Village community. Slide three. Geneva Village is located in the city of Littleton. The village was developed by the esteemed architect Eugene Sternberg, and was purchased by the city in 1975. The property managers of the property handles the leasing as well as the building operations, such as the required maintenance, are the Denver Real Estate moguls. Slide number four. Included in this presentation is an overview of the residents of the Geneva Village. The residents were surveyed with two questionnaires and with an interview process. One survey was created by our team, Be Connected, while the other was created by the residents themselves. The intent of each survey and interview was to increase citizen participation in the future of their community, but, in the future of their community, but also bring to light the feedback of the actual residents at Geneva Village. Slide five. By quantifying and analyzing the survey data, we were able to present the information about and insights into the residents of Geneva Village to help the council members direct their decision-making processes regarding this community. Slide six. The following slides will illuminate the backgrounds of the residents that make up the Geneva Village community. Measurements were taken in the categories of livelihood, social, emotional state, and resources of each resident. Slide seven. I just say this is what most of the folks were hoping, just like the report, where you said, just the basic demographic, but this is a tip of iceberg diagram used to show the demographic background information of the community. These are used to help foster deeper understanding of the life, of life of the community than what's just disclosed at the surface level of the demographic survey. Slide seven. These are, donut charts provided additional background insights into the community, the residents' experiences, significant indicators that help us understand the trajectories of the overall well-being. For example, the majority of this community at one point experienced domestic violence and are survivors of domestic violence. Slide number nine. The Geneva Village community significantly enhances the city through residents' engagement, volunteer work, porch sitting, and religious involvement. The volunteerism benefits local organizations, while engagement with the library promotes learning. Porch sitting fosters social bonds, increases in public safety, and religious opportunities also cultivate crucial support groups. The senior activity participation in the community enhances the vitality of Littleton. Slide 10. The insights gathered, sorry, the insights gathered highlights some challenges residents are facing within their community. Low occupancy rates and potential disruptions in living arrangements are significant concerns. Additionally, the presence of mental health issues, notably depression, is linked to the vacancies and fears of relocation. Consequently, it's recommended that the council focuses on addressing these challenges, offering support during life transition can significantly enhances the community's well-being and provide, and provides a general well, well-being and welfare. Slide 11. The following charts focus on accessing the residents' financial scores and their need for in-home healthcare services. These include different resources that residents are currently accessing or planning to access. Our findings reveal that those without home healthcare services foresee a need for such services within the next five years. These charts offer a valuable insight into the residents' financial situations and their evolving need for ongoing supportive services in order to sustain their dignity and independence in living. Slide 12. Each of the residents' primary source of income is social security. The most significance of their monthly expenses out of pocket are medical costs, auto insurance, and rent. Vehicles are the most valuable assets owned by these residents. Those significant, only half of the population owns a vehicle. Slide 13. Taking expenses into account, Geneva Village residents average a monthly expense-to-income ratio at 31%. This is a positive finding as its very sustainable ratio due to primarily the rental cost of their monthly rent is $368. We highly recommend engaging with community regarding any ongoing subsidies available or applicable to them. Based on their demographics, there should be a array of options, both at the federal and state level and local levels, to support these tenants. Slide 14. In short, these find that Geneva Village residents maintain financial stability mainly because their rents are low. However, more affordable housing options are needed as demonstrated with the high extent of the growing Section 8 demand. The community lacks true financial independence relying on the subsidy, or they rely on subsidies and assistance in the community in order to maintain their living. Slide 15. Residents face presidentially low financial scores due to fixed incomes and growing costs of essential expenses, leaving them with little or no monthly within savings, these are fixed incomes, once again. The majority of these incomes are required to provide, goes to their food, hygiene, basic needs, and other medical expenses. Additionally, 11 out of 12 residents also lack credit card history.
I'm going back there.
Was the dance break to counsel?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
We can't get him to go off.
But that's okay. Additionally, 11 out of the 12 residents also lack credit history. A slide 16. Given the static rental rates, no equivalent, equivalent units are available for relocation. The residents' income is much lower than the comparable units of the 2023 fair market rents, which are set by HUD, which is 1538. Affordable housing is requirement as residents are all below 30% AMI, which is the median income here, so they're actually below that, which is huge. So slide 17. Be Connected measures the social impact via social indicators of health. The intent behind taking snapshots in time of social impact is to measure the influence of social structure and community programming on individuals that make up a community. Totalling these scores allow us to gauge an impact at high levels while retaining the granularity required at exploring some of the findings that we are today. Our assessments concentrated on the social determinants of health, community engagement, social cohesiveness, well-being, and resource accessibility, and the overall quality of life to include upkeep and maintenance of their properties. Slide 18. This is a snapshot of the community's social impact of the tenant, of the, at tenant level. This chart offers an overview of residents' social impact scores, which give us insight into the collective well-being of the residents at Geneva Village. Some of the key findings here, tenants show strong community bonds at Geneva Village and within Littleton thanks to these ongoing supports. There is, there continues to be financial challenges which require attention. Residents report diligence within property management and maintenance, and their overall relationship through their landlord. These, just in general, this enhances residents' well-being and life of satisfaction. Slide 19. This is a snapshot in time of the community's social impact at a higher level. By report, by repeating this process annually, we can, or you guys can be able to monitor changes over successive years, which allows us to be able to describe changes of the community needs. Slide 20. This is a snapshot of the social impact evaluation within Geneva Village. It provides an overview depicting the combined, the combined viewpoints of the 12 tenants. This provides us with a thorough understanding of the social impact of Geneva Village as a community. Slide 21. Residents shared through stories and interviews with social, with their social worker, which was me, a word, just their experiences in general. So we used a Word Cloud analysis to show the reoccurring themes and patterns based on words, this is the fun part, and then I promise we're almost done. So, slide 22. We'll go over some of the questions asked and the understanding that we were able to gain from the residents' responses. Interviewers found that seniors' experiences were no, really no different than you or I when it came to the question, living with peers your age, what benefits do you experience? Residents emphasized the positive impact of living with peers within their close-knit community, which I think is really important for them as women. Now we see them as an older senior community, living with each other, which really speaks to the story of women. Residents emphasized the positive impact of living among peers, sorry, in the close-knit community. The positive sense of community was highlighted as greatly enhanced within the, the different social determinants of health and in lifestyle. Living among peers was seen as a, an overall positive impact on their well-being and quality of life. Slide 23. The question asks, describe your residents' experience at Geneva Village. Around half of the tenants are independent in their navigation, using cars, public transit, and a combination of other travels, too, to get around. Residents find happiness in spending time outdoors on their porches and gardening with peers. Residents feel secure and appreciate their affordable homes here in Littleton, and thank you. The, they express a strong sense of community overall. The accessibility and central location contributes to the residents'. The accessibility and central location contributes to the residents' well-being because they're close to all their, not only their services, but also their support groups, and that gives them that overall big sense of home. Question 24. When you think about moving, what are the biggest stressors? Overwhelmingly, it was the cost for ongoing housing, particularly just the rising cost. It's so much different than the average cost of $364, in which they've been paying for years now. The location, which I think since 1975 that we saw, and those rents are running off of 1996 rents off of housing urban development. If we went back in time, 364 hasn't existed in the United States since 1996. So that's a really big point there in general. And that goes to the overall fear that the tenants have about being able to stay in Littleton in general. And then being able to replicate that close-knit community. They fear that they and their support groups don't feel like they'll be able to replicate that sense of community elsewhere. Slide 25. How does your community bring value to the city of Littleton? Historically, Geneva Village is seen as a contributing substantial value. Community spirit and the bonds between neighbors were talked about and discussed. The peaceful atmosphere that the village has was mentioned multiple times by residents, and just the accessibility that the property has, just in general. But our seniors feel like they bring a lot of wisdom through their shared experiences to the rest of us here in Littleton. And wrapping up here, our summary. Ultimately, our report dove into Geneva Village and its community residents, presenting insights gained through both interview and data analysis. The study aimed to fully appreciate their backgrounds, experiences, and social determinants of health. Notably, strong community bonds were found among all 12 women who engaged in group activities such as gardening and porch sitting. Fixed incomes continue to propose a significant financial challenge related to the cost of living, affordability, and the future housing prospects of these tenants. Geneva Village in general has a positive impact on Littleton and is, as citizens, well, as citizens, I should just stick to reading my thing here. Wisdom of residents is worth noting. Although the majority of the community's tenants are women and survivors of domestic violence, they're able to maintain a remarkable positive relationship between one another and within the larger Littleton community. This was a comprehensive report, but we just really want, it did underscore the necessity of addressing the financial and the housing issues aimed to enhancing Geneva Village community and increasing those social impacts and the sense of well-being in general. So that concludes, at this time, our report. I invite you to ask any questions, and I'll do my best to answer. And if I can't answer them immediately, I will get back to you after consulting my staff. But I really appreciate you guys letting us present.
Does council have any questions for Brittany?
I have a comment. Brittany, just thank you for providing such a really thoughtful qualitative and quantitative analysis. This is exactly what we had asked for last year, to have a better understanding of this. So you do social workers proud, thank you for that. And thank you to the residents as well, who are willing to meet with her and to divulge some of this personal stuff. Like, I really appreciate that.
Just shout out to the residents. We couldn't have done this without you guys. We wanted to get to this point so they could share their stories with you. I know I read off of this, but it's so important that they are able to share their stories. They have been, not just your residents, but your tenants. This is a property you own for a very long time, and there's a lot of good things happening with those tenants. So I just, I can't give them enough shout out. This was a really intimidating process, and they were troopers, and I'm very proud of these tenants.
And I think, you know, kind of, we're putting to the point. I mean, the reason that this conversation has gone on so long, I mean, we're talking about buildings, but there's people living in the buildings, and, you know, they're first and foremost. It was just a building, that's, building is an easy conversation. You have people's lives to deal with. It's important to thoroughly understand the subject and get to know, you know, what are the impacts, pros, and cons of different ways. So, you know, I know it's taken so long, and thanks for bearing with us as we go on through. I know it dragged it out, but that's because we care about all the people there, so.
And we gave you guys, this is your data too. So you guys have the report, but we also gave you the raw data. I think there's not very many senior projects or reports like this in the United States, and you guys, this might be one of the first. So this is something for you guys to really look at as a community. You guys have a very unique property here in Tenet and a set of samples that really are not replicated in the United States. So I really hope that you guys can tap into the opportunities outside of just this.
Just a specific question. How long, generally speaking, have the residents lived in Geneva Village?
Yeah, the average that we saw was 12 years. Good question.
Can we continue with the presentation? I just wanted to pause, see if anyone had any questions for Brittany here.
All right.
You guys make it easy. Thank Brittany.
Thank you, Brittany.
You can stay or stick around. Don't have to present anymore. You can take a big breath out there. Do great.
So I think just, you know, to pull this to a close and just kind of recap that report. Again, we have all women living in Geneva Village, ranging in ages between 64 and 91. There is a lot of uncertainty, fear of displacement. They're living on fixed incomes. Rent has not changed for 40 years. So therefore, the costs that they enjoy now, or there are no alternatives or units. Ongoing affordability is a significant stressor for those tenants. Residents, again, as Brittany shared, have maintained a good quality of life on these fixed incomes and really appreciate the value of Geneva Village with, again, those themes of community, safety, and central location really coming very clearly across from the survey. I'd now like to move from our resident survey to one of the other opportunities that council identified, to have a conversation with Historical Preservation Board and really have them dive in a little bit on the historical value of Geneva Village. So I'm going to turn it over to Director of Community Development Jennifer Henninger, just kind of walk through some of those observations and talk a little bit about that evening's discussion and the letter that Historical Preservation Board has offered council and was part of your packet.
So that letter is part of your packet, and the bullet points that we have here on the screen is a great summary of that letter. So this study session happened with Historical Preservation Board, and we actually had two guest speakers at that. We had a very robust conversation about the historical value, architectural value of Geneva Village. So just a couple additional points that I like to add on these bullet points is that Geneva Village also represents Sternberg's view of architecture and planning. He was trained as a planner. As well as an architect, and actually even spent some time in my alma mater of the Royal. And it also is representative of a lot of mid-century modern architectural principles with the large windows that engage the indoor and outdoor space, the use of natural light, the eaves that hang over, as well as the integration of indoor and outdoor spaces. And all of this was really in an effort to engage community and engage residents. And then finally, Geneva Village also have that high architectural integrity with the site design and use being representative of both the architectural and creative principles of Sternberg. And Sternberg has several other architectural contributions to the Littleton community, Heritage High School being one of them, and Arapaho Community College. So, any questions?
Streetlights. Sternberg, Sternberg here.
Yes, the MS Live, as well. So it was a great conversation, and HPP enjoyed the opportunity to provide this information to you.
Any questions?
You know, I read that letter from HPP. It didn't really come off as being anything that great. Were they recommending, do they, it doesn't seem like they make a recommendation about keeping or losing it.
The study session wasn't geared towards that.
If I may speak to that, because there was some question, you know, council made a question about why would deans make that, make a recommendation like that? You know, we were, when we were trying to craft that study session, we look back at the council question, which really was to weigh in on the historic character, you know, value to the community, to make a recommendation on what the city should do with it. You know, would require, you know, much more information, context about the alternatives that go, you know, far beyond frankly, the HPP's purview in terms of some of the master plan and downtown corridor, you know, fit and all of that. So, you know, thinking about it, as we've kind of gone through this process, you know, council, that's why council is really the one who has to factor in all of those trade-offs, the costs for what it would cost to preserve it as it is, the potential fit with, you know, the long-term plans for downtown, as well as historic value and character. That was why we, why staff structured the study session the way we did.
Yeah, I mean, usually they're very outspoken about historical property. So it kind of struck me that they didn't really speak up one way or the other. They just gave us some basic facts that...
They were told most...
Very basic.
Can you please be quiet from the audience?
I got it. They were told most...
Can you please be quiet from the audience?
Yes. We did restrict the scope of their conversation.
I just have a question. What other of Sternberg's properties are deemed historical in Littleton, if any?
That actually have a historical designation? That is a great question.
Aren't there any left, are there?
I, we've lost four on Littleton Boulevard. There were four on Littleton Boulevard. I do not think that we've gone through an actual designation process for Heritage High School or ACC.
Geneva Lodge.
Geneva Lodge.
That's not Sternberg.
That's not him.
Oh, it's not him.
Pre-dates Sternberg by...
Could I ask for that information at some point? Or maybe I'm guessing each...
Sure, absolutely.
I think you just did.
Yeah, I'd like to know that.
I didn't think there was much.
And the ones that have been lost as well, I'd be curious about that.
We also, just on a little separate side note, we do have the legacy list, which is all of our historical assets in the community. We now have that out and online. I would venture that these are on there, but I will verify that.
That doesn't include the designations though, or it does?
No, you're correct. It does not. I will get you that information. Any other questions on HPP's letter? Yes.
How many acres is the property owns?
2.8.
Does that include the lodge?
Yep.
Okay.
Doesn't include the lodge or the land that's south of the complex itself.
And doesn't include the lake or anything, just?
No, it's just that.
Okay.
I just have one comment with all those ladies living over there. I think I know why Jerry Hill loved that over there.
He was a player.
And Jerry Hill, he attended, when I was on the Housing Authority Board, he attended every meeting. You know, he was very passionate about the Geneva Village.
So a few questions that council also presented in addition to the survey of the residents and also those considerations and observations from Historical Preservation Board included some of the, or whether or not the property could be converted to affordable for-sale units. And in the staff report, we talk a little bit more about some of the challenges that we found in a conversation that we had with Habitat for Humanity. Obviously, there are a number of partners that we could engage in that work, but that's a logical partner that is here, operating in Littleton and has kind of an understanding of both our land use code and kind of our development review process and what have you. One of the, or a couple of the things that they really noted were, just in terms of creating the overall system efficiency with the construction type. Their goal really with for-sale product is that they want to be able to present the house to its new owner with about eight to 10 years before any major work needs to be done or any major system needs to be replaced. So they saw some real limitations on that front. The other, because the property is intact and does not include public right-of-way in terms of its access point to those units, would most likely require a homeowner's association. So we did look, do some, you know, sort of spitball analysis of what those costs of an HOA. In your staff report, we estimated that at 300 to 400. We did receive a few questions from council about the cost of an HOA. So with the help of our housing policy analyst, Julie Latham, we were able to kind of take a quick scan of condo units. So this would be more in the vein of a condo unit here in the city and found that those HOA fees for current units that are for sale ranged roughly from $235 to $467. So that kind of feels like a similar range to what we had kind of had a level of understanding from Habitat for Humanity as well. One of the other questions that council asked about were the rent assumptions, if it were based on $4.8 million in debt service. Again, the restoration of those Geneva Village funds and the average rent, you know, being, if the city were to pay for half of those rehabilitation costs, the total rent would be about $813, and that'd be an increase from their current rent of, on average, $433. And there is a lot more information in the staff report. So I'm happy to delve into any of those or answer any questions that you might have on those two questions from our last time together on Geneva Village.
Any questions?
So where is CHAFA on this? You've been communicating with CHAFA, so where are they on this particular property?
So we have not had a meaningful conversation about whether or not this would be an opportunity for low-income housing tax credits. So that, is there another aspect of CHAFA that you might be interested in?
If I may, council, we had spoken a little bit of our, we had speculated a little on the competitiveness of a project with these demographics in the context of the kinds of projects that CHAFA is funding these days in terms of a number of units and cost and all those things. I don't know if you could comment on that, or if we should get back to them.
Yeah, I think in the last presentation and discussion that we had with you, we did sort of some comparable projects. The density is much greater than 28 units. So I think our conversations with both CHAFA, predominantly through our partnerships with Habitat for Humanity or our South Metro Housing Options Housing Authority and others, as well as just a sort of general understanding of what state funds have been made available through ARPA and some of the programs, both loan programs and grant programs. We weren't hearing that this 28 units would really compete very well for any of those funding sources that with 2.8 acres, they would want to see a greater number of units.
Absolutely, and that's kind of where I'm going at. If CHAFA was going to be involved, they would want to see about 40 or 50 units on that same, let's say, 2.8 acres.
Yeah. I think our dwelling units per acre means it'd be, you know, somewhere around, we could go as high as 80 units. But I think, you know, in terms of thinking about along those lines, obviously because it is in our downtown core, a high level of design and some other considerations, you know, it's probably somewhere around 60.
I have a question, it's kind of based on rents. I don't know which is the best place to ask it, but what... No, that's not speaking up. What other places have rents that are comparable to that in the metro, if anything? What's the lowest rent in the metro area?
I was like, we have an amazing rolodex ready in my chair, Brittany, of, you know, providing that level of assistance for residents, so.
Yeah, I mean, if we're just talking about CHAFA units, that's the Colorado Low Income Housing Finance Association, well, Administrator. 30% AMI, these tenants wouldn't even qualify for the lowest affordable unit subjected to CHAFA, which is a 30% AMI units. Their incomes wouldn't meet the threshold. To my knowledge, and my colleagues that we've reached out to, there is no other property like this, which makes this a kind of challenging situation because if you wouldn't act like a REA Act, you couldn't move the tenants to a comparable unit because there is no comparable unit to move them to because of the rents that they're at. We found the average rent that were paid based on tenant reporting was... Our, we found the average rent that were paid based on tenant reporting was $364. That doesn't even meet 30% AMI on FMRs, so.
Unsubsidized units.
Yeah, unsubsidized, yeah. So to my knowledge, there are none, not even in the United States. That's also why SMHO had some issues. Some of the women have, were able to be awarded Section 8 vouchers, which were really exciting. The rents are so low that the vouchers are having issues leasing up in place. The voucher won't actually cover it. So, yeah. To my knowledge, long story short, nothing.
Well, that was right to my next question is, I mean, what's the opportunity for someone that can afford $375 in rent?
There is none. You're in the top housing market in the United States of America. Littleton is even more affluent and these women want to stay here, so there would be none.
I think, can you may I ask a question? I think if I can try to jump in there, could, this might be the time to talk about how the vouchers could assist when they're available and, you know, could they help the residents reach the, you know, CHAFRA, the low-income housing communities in the area if and when those vouchers would be available?
Long-winded answer for six months, yes. The women right now, the ones who have the Section 8 voucher, the rents at how they are set right now, they're not being raised. That voucher can only stay at that property for six months until it's actually terminated.
And I can't imagine vouchers going to cover a lot of units around here that's available. I mean, how much is the voucher for?
In Littleton, I think SMHO's threshold is 1605. So they have a high voucher utilization rate in Littleton.
Availability is not there for that kind of money.
For, I mean, it would be challenging, but we could find 12 units. It would be tough. It wouldn't happen overnight, but the housing stock is low. You're totally right, yeah.
But I think, because we had had the opportunity to have some conversation with you, there is some opportunity that if the vouchers were available, given what we're seeing in the Littleton housing stock now, there would be some opportunity there. I don't know, Kathleen, if you have anything else to add there, or Brittany?
With a Section 8 voucher, they could, the tenants could find suitable rentals in Littleton, but they would have to have that voucher. Would it be hard? Yeah, we have actually one tenant who was awarded a Section 8 voucher through South Metro Housing Options and is actually choosing to relocate off a property. They're just tired of the stress, honestly, of not knowing where they're going to be. So they chose to relocate off a property and they're relocating, still centrally located downtown, about a mile and a half, two miles away from Geneva Village, still proper city, downtown. She was able to secure that within 30 days. But she was moving very quickly and worked really hard to do that. It will take a while to find it, but it is possible, yeah.
And that's kind of what I was getting to, is, you know, how does one find housing? You know, I mean, the issue, one of the issues, there's lots of issues, is that rent hasn't increased for 40 years. I mean, it's out of, kind of whack with reality of how that works and how, I mean, if you're used to paying that and it goes up, that's a big shock. I mean, it's, so there are opportunities to find housing, to bridge that gap.
Absolutely.
It's not easy, because if it was easy, we would-
And, you know, our team volunteered to sign the women up on Section 8 vouchers. There was a huge gap. SMHO and the city of Littleton couldn't provide the staffing to sign the women up on Section 8 vouchers list. So our team was like, this is a huge opportunity if we missed it. This is the first time that the Section 8 waitlist opened up here in 12 years and I do not know of any opening in the state of Colorado. So when that waitlist opened, we volunteered our time and got as many women as we could to sign up on that voucher and we got eight out of the 12 to sign up. So, yeah, which was really good.
Big deal.
And I believe five out of the eight so far have been awarded those vouchers, which is really, really good. I feel really great about those tenants. That increases their social impact indicators high. And with the voucher, they are only paying adjusted 30% of their income towards housing. So many of them will probably be spending actually less than what they are paying now towards a housing. So that voucher was a really, really good thing. I told them regardless of Geneva Village or not, those vouchers are truly, it increases their life expectancy, truly.
Do you know what happened to the other three? You said five out of eight?
They're, SMHO is still working off that waitlist, yeah. They're pulling from my understa, they're just batches off and they're still working through that waitlist. So we're thinking all eight, based on our conversations with SMHO, Be Connected's conversation with SMHO, all eight women should get Section 8 vouchers, so.
I see her. I saw a hand over here before.
No, I just want to say thank you because that everything moved so quickly. I got emails from some of the residents and talked to Jim, boom, 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 you were over there helping them and-
You guys were really great. I know it was a lot of confusion when we jumped in and I was like, guys, we got to sign up on Section 8 vouchers. And Kathleen's like, you guys go do that, we agree with you.
Some of the residents didn't have computers and so, thank you.
Everything's online now, so just from the accessibility standpoint. And then it was on a very special day and then SMHO's system actually went down that day. So, and then the property was owned, it was a whole mess. Some of them, I'm glad we were there, but I'm glad the women were, most of them were willing to get with us and sign up on those waitlists and we hope that they can start utilizing some of those vouchers now on the property. And then we have one already relocating out with some assistance, which is really awesome.
What's the willingness of folks to move away from Littleton? Because I know there's other vacancies at Section 8 properties.
Oh, absolutely. With these 12 tenants, Littleton's home. It's close to all of their family and support groups, especially their, their children who provide a lot of ongoing support. But yeah, most of them, Littleton has been home for, even before Geneva Village, so they definitely want to all stay in Littleton, yeah. And then just the stress of even moving doctors was like a really big concern, which is understandable, but yeah.
And I think, you know, the Section 8 or the housing choice vouchers, that's that opportunity to kind of find a place, but then there are also project-based vouchers for South Metro Housing Options locations that are here too. So we're hearing encouraging news on, you know, Allison Court just had their waitlist open up and Bradley House is, from our conversations with South Metro Housing Options, will open up soon in weeks, not months. So those are additional opportunities too for, you know, here, that are here in the city.
And I'll just add to that. Kathleen has been really great about different resources coming up and us too of just like, hey, can we get this out to the tenants? Whether the tenants actually want to do it or not, just giving them the information and a case manager to help them do whatever they need in housing and other areas has been just really helpful and she's been a great advocate to get, to help get the tenants that support. So any resources that we come across in housing, we're going to disperse that to the Geneva Village, just because housing in general, we just don't, as you know, it's a housing crisis across, across the metro in Colorado. So anything that comes up, we're going to send it your way and also to tenants and if we can get any, especially those last, last three to four folks and their caregivers onto waitlist too, that's just going to be important for like long-term life expectancy. And that's really what Be Connected cares about. We are rooted in housing stability. So anything that, to keep that household stable, that's really what we're focused on. So those Section 8 vouchers were a major game changer for those residents.
I think we have more.
A few more slides. Oh, oh, no, so go ahead and you can go through your slides.
Okay. I was going to say, and we do have a slide more specifically on that assistance, but, you know, just to recap from our previous conversation about some of the finance considerations for rehabbing the units, you know, again, that sort of preserving the general fund for the benefit of the community at large and the prioritization that council expressed interest in for our capital and sales tax revenues for specifically for capital projects. And then obviously, we don't know the timing or how competitive some of the new funds through Proposition 1, 2, 3 may be. We anticipate those to be competitive pools of money. And then our Inclusionary Housing Ordinance has a fee in lieu. We would anticipate the first of those projects kind of going through towards the end of this year and then into next year. We are still actively working and, you know, this little spoiler alert, we are seeing a lot of interest in developers having the conversation about building those units. So that may just mean that we are in a really speculative moment of what that fee in lieu might look like and how those resources could be deployed. And then the other thing that I think came across in your conversation earlier, sort of that opportunity to, for ongoing management long-term, that again, that is not really a core city service, that that would continue to be a contract service or some other partnership with somebody that does provide that core service. So a little bit of update, which we talked about, so I'll kind of fly through this a little bit easier. Again, 13 leased units. The residents enrolled in that waitlist, I think that's not all 13, it's actually the eight that you've shared this evening. What we have done is put together assistance based on requests from residents and made that second phase of Be Connected's work available for residents to have some support system for housing navigation, assistance with moving, you know, really kind of all of the things that, you know, the purge from the move, right out to the move inspection and, you know, securing that security deposit and any holding fees that are necessary for that new unit. So it's a pretty comprehensive package and really requires Be Connected to be on that Ready 5, you know, when those requests come in. And again, as Brittany shared, we do have five of those requests that have been submitted to the city, so we're in the process of providing that level of support.
And one's moving out. So Kathleen really made all this happen to support the one tenant, which is just amazing. Have to give that shout out.
Okay. So as we talked about at the last meeting and the policy direction from earlier in this presentation, you know, there are these two paths that council has expressed some interest in, either rehabilitating the units or redeveloping for more housing and taking into consideration some of the other work that council has supported through Project Downtown and, you know, sort of that gateway concept that was brought to us by the Littleton Downtown Development Authority and their plan of development, sort of recognizing that north gateway. So the rehabilitation, you know, again, that ongoing work with residents, developing sort of a timeline, what the construction can look like. I know Keith is here, everyone's on Ready 5 tonight, right? Like, so Keith is here, you know, if you had questions about that, the construction cost of that, but we are seeing a huge increase if we were to deploy a construction team unit by unit as opposed to looking more comprehensively across the whole property. And then obviously, our interest in sort of negotiating a management agreement with our housing authority or other partner and then once we've gone through that process, thinking through the leasing of those new units. The other side of the screen there, the redevelopment and again, that consideration of that northern gateway, you know, obviously we would set a date for the closure of the community and work with those residents to permanently relocate. And again, you know, their interest and our interest is trying to find a solution that keeps them here in the city. And then we would engage a community and urban or historic design partner to really do some of that vision for the future property. I think we would also really take into consideration that whole northern gateway. As, as you all know, you know, probably some of the biggest moves that a city can make to spur private investment is really setting that infrastructure in place and providing a path forward. There is nothing more attractive for private investment than knowing that infrastructure really supports a sort of future idea of, of the gateway and downtown. And then we would-
Is the FMR for Littleton? And then the vow, it's still low enough that those, those women could stay there for, you know, three to five years. And as the owner still increases rent, it's still, the voucher goes up every year at least 3 to 5%, which would grow with that typical owner increasing rent too.
Did the voucher, if the rent increased, the voucher make up the difference?
Yeah. And, well, it not only makes the difference, it really is, the tenants will always pay an adjusted 30% of their income towards housing and so they get deductions off for their medical, being seniors, if they have disability. So they only pay adjusted 30% of that base rent. So it's very small.
The rents could go up, but they only pay the same share.
It's typically 86.3% comes from the government, while the remaining comes from the tenant.
Then that would allow beyond the six months. If the rents went up, the Section 8 was used, then it would, then the six month-
That's my worry is-
If the rents were high enough to meet the standards of the program.
That's something we should consider as a benefit to the, I mean, I know that sounds really weird, to benefit the tenant by raising their rent, but, I mean, regardless of either way, we choose on this, I mean, to help those tenants.
We want to preserve their vouchers, yeah.
But it's not necessarily raising their rent either.
Well, it's raising-
Because if it's still 30%-
Raise the rent, not their rent, but raise the contractor's.
So that we can go beyond the six months.
Okay.
Exactly. It wouldn't make, because like right now, those vouchers would make you guys have to make a forced decision on a lot of things. If we can increase that rent and then the women aren't on that six months timeline to relocate out of that property or like lose their voucher. And that's what the women, some of them are willing to give up their vouchers and we're like, wow.
What about the people that didn't get the vouchers and their rent goes up and now, yeah, the others that didn't get it or haven't received them yet?
I think this is a complicated discussion that we don't need to talk, I mean, it's something we need to have a discussion in the report.
Exactly.
But it's good to have that on there.
It's something maybe to consider as an interim step.
Yeah, that's true.
And I will say that the bulk of our work, this is a really new element to something that we've learned and having those vouchers and going through the process with the housing authority to understand whether or not those vouchers could be applied at Geneva Village. I think we've learned this in the last two weeks.
Yeah.
And SMHO has been involved with that and they've been helpful with that, because that's, I mean, well, but this is-
The housing authority, so yeah, they-
Yeah.
They make the decision.
And so, and they've been, you know, they've been very responsive because the vouchers do have, you know, a level of time sensitivity and so we've been trying to manage through that. But that is, that is something as we think about coming back to council, you know, something that we want to kind of fuller, more fully understand and also kind of give you the alternatives of what that may look like.
Sounds like a positive development to help.
Yeah, this is actually a positive thing. I feel like the women getting the vouchers and stuff and some of them are doing spring cleaning, getting their units ready for inspection and had to get rid of some stuff. The children are here too. So we have a couple of tenants literally getting ready to lease up in place, so.
Great. But it seems to me, Brittany, that, because I, and I've been mentioning folks need to get on a voucher or Section 8 analysis, it sounds to me that they've been hearing it, but you were able to help them get it done. Because as you said, it's a complicated thing.
Yeah, that was, honestly, that was a huge gap. There was, the, SMHO told the women to go to the library, because none of them actually have computers and that, we were able to capture that too. None of them have computers and SMHO uses third-party vendor write cafe and so everything's online. So those women would have had to go online. And the flip side, since SMA, the, I said the system crashed too, SMHO, when they administered the property or property managers, some of the social security numbers of the women were still in their system. So they're kept becoming an error up on their page that would allow them to be on the waitlist. So just, it was such a mess. I wasn't anticipating all this when I volunteered.
But I guess my point is, Brittany, it sounds like you've been worth the money to help these folks out.
Thank you. They're great, but yeah, that, that Section 8 voucher, I would say that right there got your bang for your buck. Yeah, getting them up on that, that just protects the city and the tenants long-term. And I just want to also commend the council. There's not many council, I mean, I kept telling the tenants this, who actually want to know who their residents are before they make decisions. So the fact that you guys put your money behind that, there's not a lot of councils who are doing that. And then a lot of councils were really excited when they heard you guys did that. So that's just really big because that literally, you know who your community is and that's true citizen participation. So I really want to commend you guys because a lot of folks are scared of that data.
Not a lot of commending tonight.
Really good. It's seven o'clock. Eight thirty.
Time flies when you have fun, huh? Continue.
Okay, and this-
So last, last slide, you know, I think as we build toward the September 19th council meeting where we will be seeking council direction, you know, staff's ready to kind of start to put together a lot of the factors that we've- a lot of the factors that we've, we've talked about over the last probably couple of years, even preceding me. Um, but it's the, you know, cost of the rehabilitation, the value of the, of the historic resource, um, the, the opportunity for fit within the northern gateway and the, the downtown plan, uh, council's very high priority for, for affordable housing. Um, we're ready, you know, I wanted tonight to just kind of point out some principles, it's not a firm recommendation, but some principles that we would encourage council to think about as we work toward that, uh, next meeting. Um, you know, I think supporting with what, whatever we do, supporting the, uh, the northern gateway emphasis, um, redeveloping, um, you know, to where we have a majority, at least a a majority affordable residential use for that property. Um, I think there's a, a lot of opportunity to incorporate the historic, the, the Sternberg design principles as we think about the use of, of open space and kind of community conducive design features into, into the next kind of community, if, if council were to go that way. Integration of both the rental and the, the some for sale property in the, the gateway. Um, expanding the community and, and downtown amenities through mixed use. I think, uh, Assistant City Manager Osher commented on this at the, at the beginning. Um, if we were to kind of have a, a new vision for the, the property, um, it would o, open up visioning also for how we, we might embrace that, um, the properties in the area too, and how we could use infrastructure and other tools to really look at all of the properties, even, you know, the one across the street to the west, um, for that kind of next fifty years, um, for that part of downtown. And then also, just continue partnership with, uh, with private owners, um, and LDDA. Also mentioned, it's not on the slide, but we think, you know, if, um, council were to just, it's, it's important that if we want to, uh, to redevelop, that we kind of set our, our flag in the ground for, you know, some period, it might be two years, it might be three years, that can simultaneously continue to help, uh, help residents find safe and affordable and high dignity housing while we also go through an extensive city process for visioning, um, you know, and, you know, design of that, uh, community, so there's gonna be, we're gonna need that time, so we think we should optimize it in favor of the, uh, residents to, to make sure that, that, that they stay kind of primary there. Um, so, that's what we have for you tonight, we hope that we'll hear any more questions that you have. And, uh, you know, I think there's all, we have even found questions as we're talking about, well, what if we did this, you know, um, for instance, I think the opportunity based on some of the, the HPB comments, what if there were a portion of the property that were, that were retained, you know, for, um, historic value there, um, you know, the, the majority of it would be, would be, uh, be redeveloped. We don't think now's the time to get into those kind of infinite opportunities. I think it's important that council on the, the nineteenth, next month, gives some direction that we either start the rehabilitation process and all of that planning and the funding and the financing and all of that, or we do, uh, kind of set the goal for, for, for redevelopment and, um, start to work through those infinite spectrum of, of options that the, that a city could do to meet your goals as we, we move forward. That's all we have now.
Pedro.
Any, any questions?
Yeah, uh, maybe one request in the interim between now and our decision-making process too. I, you know, I really appreciate HPB's, um, analysis of the historic nature of it. I, I guess what I would look for is maybe what the cost and timeframe would be to kind of, i- if the property were to be, um, uh, redeveloped in its entirety, um, or even in part, what the cost and timing and process would be for the documentation with regards to the historic nature of it, kind of going through kind of what a full suite of options would be to kind of, um, you know, photograph, document, preserve, you know, what can be, um, through the property. So, hopefully, on the nineteenth, I would just love to see just an approximation of what that would look like for a property of this nature.
Following best practices for, uh, preservation there of, of the, regardless of, of what the, what the path forward is.
Regardless of what the path forward is, yeah.
A question for Pam, so, on historic preservation, would it, is it, this, is it just the exterior or is it also the inside or? It's mainly exterior, I thought, right?
You know, you see old buildings that are modern inside.
Right, okay, yeah.
There's federal funds, right, like if we decided to save like a section or, you know, a section of it, whether it stayed in place or it moved somewhere else on the property, there's federal funds to help with that.
Could be, could be.
Federal and state.
I wouldn't rest entirely on that, I think the city would wanna plan to have, you know, funding and have a, a funding plan that could then be offset if there, those kinds of funds were available. Uh, but those, those kinds of grants are not easy to come by, they're out there, but they're.
And it has to have a historical designation to access those grants.
I think that's what we, maybe lean on HPB for a little guidance or.
And the city can create their own grants for that matter.
We have a huge historic preservation fund that was for part of downtown, that hasn't been used very much, I mean, that I know of.
It's only fifty thousand dollars though.
No, 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 it's, it's bigger, is that half a million?
And that doesn't mean it's.
It's not the actual historic district, which is not in the historic district, and we have received multiple applications now for that funding, so that is out, it's not available.
Word is out.
Yes, word is definitely out.
Any other questions for staff, council?
Very good.
Um, so, yeah, just to reiterate, we'll have, uh, this at a regular meeting, uh, September nineteenth. Give, uh, public opportunity to reach out to us, come speak publicly. Uh, the public comment period is not the only time people can voice their, uh, thoughts on issues, they can send us all emails and send them to the city as well, so, you know, I think it's important that hear, hear from everyone here, but, uh, thank you, and I, I really wanna, uh, thank Brittany, uh, once again for all the work you put in there and, and.
Kudos to Brittany, yeah.
Putting the residents, uh, you know, first and making sure that they're heard, understood their whole situations are, cause that was, you know, was important to council, and I appreciate you doing that, and it's not like you were able to connect with them, and I think that they, uh, benefited from your involvement.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Cool.
Thanks.
All right, thanks. Uh, City Manager, any, any word, update?
Great happy, Ashley.
Come on, you can talk right now. All right, so we are adjourned to the twenty-nine.
You were talking about this.
You could opine, uh.
I'm sure it's gonna be noted.